I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order this regular session of the Vienna City Council having taken role and having quorum, we will proceed. The first item on our agenda is our public forum. The Boy Scouts were unable to be here this evening, but we look forward to having them with us in the future. We have one individual signed up for the public forum, and that is Brian Flan.
I feel like a stranger up here. It's been so long, I apologize. I finally finished college, I'm done, I don't have to worry about it anymore. So, two things I want to bring up, and I'm sure, I don't know if they've been brought up in past meetings or not. One is Nineteenth Street in Vienna. The, I mean, I've been living there for four years. I live at 1202, right on the hill. And when it rains, that road turns into a river. And right now, my car's in the shop with a bad transmission. Fun, fun. So I have to walk everywhere. Well, when you're walking on that street, when it's raining, you have to walk literally in the middle of the street. I don't know about you guys, but that's not safe. Can't walk on either side because you've got a river running down both sides of the road. So I think we need to figure out what's going on. Does the sewer's need cleaned out? Does the road need to be redone? Something, because it's getting out of hand. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, here a couple of weeks ago, we had some, some bad storms. And I was actually caught in one of them. And I was actually down here at the bus stop, right here in front of Harbor Freight, when an idea popped in my head. Why are we exposing children, elder, everybody, to the elements at these bus stops? Because when you're sitting at the bus stop there by Harbor Freight, cars come down, they don't care if anybody's sitting in there or not, they'll splash you like yesterday's news. There's a bus stop up by Aldi, same thing. There's one here at Freedom Park. And I thought, my idea, I don't know if you guys will be able to see this or not, is buy some of these vinyl strips, hang them from the edge of the bus stops. Hang them down, so it protects, it's not going to be a complete protection from the elements, but it'd be a lot better than getting splashed, literally. I got splashed. I had my umbrella and I was holding it up so I wouldn't get splashed from all the walk. So what if we put those strips up, not only to protect elderly and older people taking the bus, disabled, kids, when they're riding the bus in the wintertime, you know, protect them from the cold? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The minutes from the regular council meeting on May eighth, 2025 have been printed, posted, and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, the minutes will stand approved as posted. We do have a couple of items under unfinished business. The first is the second reading on ordinance. On the ordinance, amending Article one zero five point oh two B two. Mr. Skogstad.
This is an ordinance amending Article one five oh two B two of open market purchases. Competitive bidding purchases increase the amount, the amount triggered competitive bidding requirement from seventeen thousand five hundred to twenty-five thousand dollars. Being ordained by the common council of the city of Vienna that are hereby amended. One oh five oh two B two of market purchases, competitive bidding purchases increasing the amount triggered competitive bid process from seventeen thousand five hundred to twenty-five thousand dollars. And for the ordinance to read as follows. For the purchase of materials, supplies, and equipment for procurement by the city of value more than two thousand dollars and less than twenty-five thousand dollars, the purchasing agent shall obtain and submit three prices from the open market of said materials, supplies, and equipment, unless said materials, supplies, and equipment are only attainable from two or fewer sources. In any event, the purchasing agent shall purchase the lowest-priced qualifying material, supply, and/or equipment.
Do I have a motion to approve the second ord, the second reading of this ordinance? Have a motion and a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Having none, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two under unfinished business is a second reading for replacement pages.
And it's my understanding just to inform council that the required Class II legal advertisement has been completed, so the council may consider these, this update. And ordinance to approve the 2024 replacement pages to the codified ordinances, whereas certain provisions within the codified ordinances should be amended to conform with current state law and whereas various ordinances of general and permanent nature have been passed by council, which should be included in the codified ordinances. And whereas council has hereby entered into a contract with Wol, with the Walter and String Company to prepare and publish such revisions, which is before council. Now, therefore, being ordained by the, by council, the city of Vienna, that section one, the ordinances of the city of Vienna, West Virginia of a general and permanent nature is revised, recodified, rearranged, and consolidated into component codes, chapters, articles, and sections within the 2024 replacement pages to the codified ordinances are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, the following sections and articles are hereby added, amended, or repealed as respectively indicated in order to comply with current state law. I'm not going to go through each of those. I'm just going to refer to them by category. First is the administrative code, traffic code, the general defenses code, and, and all of the individual updates are listed beneath each of those sections. Section three, percent of West Virginia Code A eleven four B. A, notice of the proposed adoption of the current replacement pages to the city code shall be given by publication as provided in West Virginia Code A eleven forty-two. And B, through authentication of this ordinance, the mayor shall certify the current replacement pages to the city code, which shall be filed as a permanent record in the office of the city clerk. The ordinances, the ordinance, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Do I have a motion to accept the res, the second reading of the ordinance as read? I have a motion and a second, so open for any discussion. Having none, all signify in favor by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on now to new business. Raj will join me. Maybe. We just want to make sure that we get you all. Melissa, if you and your family will come up. So often, you know, we, we just get to do the business end of things, but in several cases, we get to do the, the things that are very meaningful. And tonight, we have a resolution that has great meaning. And Mr. Skogstad, if you will, will you please read?
Sure. This is a resolution dedicating the Jackson Park pool diving boards in honor of and in memory of Mike Elam. Whereas Mike Elam was a devoted husband, beloved father, cherished friend, and faithful servant of his community and of Christ. Whereas Mike was a nineteen eighty-seven graduate of Parkersburg High School, a nineteen ninety-two graduate of Marshawn University, and was inducted into the PHS Football Hall of Fame in two thousand nineteen, and was a co-vented member of Vienna Baptist Church. Whereas Mike was a proudly serving two-term Vienna City Council member, actively involved in Vienna recreation. He generously gave his time to youth sports, coached several youth baseball teams over the years, loved to compete, and had a heart as big as a smile. He brought joy and laughter wherever he went, and always found a way to make others feel welcome. Whereas Mike was a devout follower of Christ, who lived out his faith in service and love. Whereas his greatest joy was being a father, who was justifiably proud of his sons, Chaz and Tyson, and the family he made with his dedicated and loving wife, Melissa. He worked hard, loved deeply, and left a legacy of kindness, commitment, and community spirit. Therefore, being resolved by the common council of the city of Vienna in honor of his service, spirit, and enduring impact on the youth of Vienna, these diving boards at the Jackson Park Pool are dedicated to Mike, so that generations of children may leap, laugh, and soar, just as he encouraged them to do in life. Well done, good and faithful servant. With heartfelt gratitude, the city of Vienna.
You've heard the resolution. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept? Second? Open for discussion.
I believe Melissa might have been the first person to jump off of those diving boards when the pool opened, if I remember right.
Yeah, I had, I had the boys go off first and then I followed.
Okay, so what a fitting tribute to this dedication. I'll remember that as well forever.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of passing the resolution as read, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Unless you say a few words.
Counsel, thank you. I went ahead and prepared something so that I wouldn't ram along. Mike Elam was larger than life. If you were with Mike, you were going to have fun and laugh a lot. He was also a showman and loved to play to the crowd. That was especially true at the pool and on the diving boards. He had great memories of going to Jackson Pool as a kid and working there as a teen. And even in his fifties, he would revert back and show the kids what the class of eighty-seven was all about. He took great pride in splashing the lifeguard on duty for the diving boards as he showed off his amazing can opener. And even though he was terrible at flips, he would still try them over and over and would scream when it turned into a backsmacker. I loved the laughter of our sons and their friends. When so many pools had started getting rid of diving boards, I was determined to keep them at Jackson. Last summer, I watched hundreds of boys and girls of all ages loving the diving boards, hopping back in line as soon as they came out of the water, competing with each other, daring each other, synchronizing their tricks. Mike would have loved it, and he would have been in line with all those kids. As someone who cares about my community and who was heavily invested in the pool renovation, I wanted to contribute to the cost of the project by honoring Mike's memory. I want to thank the nearly thirty people who made donations to the Mike Elam Memorial Diving Boards. Combined with my gift, these boards will continue to bring memories that will last a lifetime for today's youth.
I didn't know Mike. Never, never had the opportunity to take, meet him and to, to interact with him. But a testimony of what kind of a man he was, I have not encountered anyone through the campaign, through my time in office, that have had nothing but wonderful things to say about Mike. And Melissa, I know you're an integral part of the pool and all the design and everything that went on. And it's an honor that we can honor him by doing this. I present you with a signed copy of the resolution that was read here today. This, of course, will make this official for history to come. No one can ever challenge that those are your father's diving boards. Because you can go right back here, and you can say, on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, they were signed into the record. We will also be placing a plaque there so that all individuals that come and use those diving boards will be able to see who those are for. So Melissa, thank you very much. It's things like that that make this job enjoyable, and I'm just glad that we could do that, Melissa, for you and your family. Thank you again for your service, too, as our community, and we know that you're not done yet. Never say never, right? Moving on to the second item on our agenda is a resolution, resolution using the remainder budget and capital funds of the Pollinator Garden Lighting Project for the purchase of a tractor. Mr. Skogstad, if you will.
This is a resolution using the remaining budget and capital funds from the Pollinator Garden Lighting Project for the purchase of a tractor. Being resolved by the common council of the city of Vienna, that the mayor or his executive is authorized to use the remaining budget and capital funds from the Pollinator Garden Lighting Project for the purchase of a small tractor. These funds are budgeted in zero, in line on zero one, five seven nine, six five, five eight.
I think you.
Think about that tractor for example.
I, yeah, I, I think you add it to that, and I don't recall an amendment being made to that. Having heard the resolution, do I have a motion to accept? Have a motion and a second? Having a motion and a second, open for discussion.
This came up during the budget finance meeting. Question was raised, and Amy's going to follow up on it. This is a small tractor, so you can put a blade on the front, and you can also put one of those brushes. So one of the things they were talking about is possibly using it to dig out around the bus stops or the bus stations instead of using a big tractor. So you can put a blade on the front. I asked how much it would cost so that way they go down the sidewalks, Grand Central, try to get the snow off so people can actually use the sidewalks during winter. So something to think about, because it's a small one. And then instead of keeping it up on Sixtieth Street, they can use it.
We're in, we're in the state at the police garage, the bay. And that's what originally brought this up, was the concern that several council members brought up of being able to dig out and around the bus stops and various things. Then we also discovered during the, that thirty-second storm that we had when we lost trees all over the city and various things, the city had access to a lot of large equipment to be able to main streets, but we had a lot of residents that needed assistance and didn't know where to turn for smaller projects in and around their home. Adding this to the city inventory, any equipment like it, will give us a greater availability to provide services to our community in their hours of need. So I believe this is, this is a good investment and a very important piece of equipment that we can add to our tool bag. Is there any other discussion? Having no other discussion, all those that are in favor of the resolution as read signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is using the remainder of budget and capital funds from the McDonough restroom project to go towards a twenty-four by one forty-four pole building. Mr. Skogstad.
It's a resolution using the remaining budget and capital funds from the McDonough restroom project towards a twenty-four by one hundred forty-foot pole building. Being resolved by the common council of the city of Vienna, that the mayor or his executive is hereby authorized to use the remaining budget and capital funds from the Wildlife Refuge restroom project towards the purchase or construction of a twenty-four by one hundred forty footer, one hundred forty-four foot pole building. These funds are budgeted in zero one, in line on zero one, five forty, sixty five, fifty seven.
Having heard the resolution as written, do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion and a second? Open for discussion.
I just, I'll just say, I, I really appreciate the detail that, that we're, we're keeping with the agenda, showing the location of the building, showing the design of the building, you know, getting into the intricacies of all of the different, all of the room that it's going to add for storage for the city, so. Yeah, this is definitely a much-needed building, from what I understand, so.
Well, the other thing, too, that Craig talked about was it's going to be modular, so if you want to add to it later, you can.
I remember when the McDonough restroom project came up, I think it was in the last term, and eyebrows went up all the way around the room, this is what the cost was. And it was pretty much rejected. And so to see us getting both the restroom project done and then the addition of this facility that, you know, whatever use, better use of funds than, you know, what was originally proposed, so glad to see that happen.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, if you'll signify by raising your right hand in approval of the resolution as written. Motion passes unanimously. The fourth item is the bid approval of the twenty-four by one forty-four pole building.
Seal bids for the construction of a twenty-four by one hundred forty-four foot pole building were opened on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at ten a.m. with all in results. Jimmy Harper Construction, a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Start to finish construction, those three hundred and eighty thousand. After careful review of the bid proposals, are recommendation for council approval from the Budget Finance Committee for the construction of a twenty-four by one hundred forty-four pole building is Jimmy Harper Construction at a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Signing the project, we from the city's general fund line item zero one dash five four zero dash six five dash five seven in the Parks Department, pending council approval and budget revision.
Having heard the bid approval, do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion to accept. And a second? Open for discussion. Amy got you before you. She was just really soft. Open for discussion. Go ahead.
It's three times the delta between the two bidders. We brought that up to Craig. He said that both parties were at the discussion.
The pre-bid meeting.
For the pre-bid, and he went through everything with everybody. Now, this company, the start to finish construction could be a much higher price because they're southern part of the state, said, as opposed to Jimmy Harper, who's local. But he went through everything, so it was apples to apples comparison.
Is there any other discussion? Having none, all those that are in favor of accepting the bid approval as read, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number five, the general fund budget revision, number five.
This was going to go for a transfer from other funds to, transfer from capital reserves. It was going to be eighty-five thousand dollars, and it was going to go into increasing construction of the pole building, which was going to go to the capital outlay, so that's how this whole project was going to be paid for.
The remainder of the funds from the restroom renovation, and then the balance paid for out of general fund. Do I have a motion to accept general fund budget revision number five? I have a motion and a second? She got a little louder on that one. Having a motion and a second, open for discussion.
We've come this far.
Having no other discussion, if you're in favor of general fund budget revision number five, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. And Mr. Skogstad, I had not done this before, so you'll have to correct me if I'm, if I'm doing this incorrectly or incorrectly. At this time?
At this time, the mayor is moving for an executive session to discuss a personnel and policy matter with respect to item number six on the agenda. I don't know if you have that in your Dropbox, but it was posted it and as, with the amended agenda.
It was emailed, sent.
Okay, so you got it in your email.
Do I need a motion and a second?
You need a motion and a second.
Do I have a motion to go into executive council? I have a motion and a second?
And we have a vote? You have to vote on it.
All those in favor of going to the executive session?
And let the record reflect that at six twenty-six, we.
And let the record reflect that at six twenty-six, we need to.